Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, September 29th, 2020 school committee meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Natalie Darrow, student representative.
Robert Mullen.
Jeff Boe.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Teneral.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
All please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the September 15th, 2020 school committee minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Correspondents?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have two items on the correspondence tonight. One, we did receive a nice email from the administrative assistant, Colin Loizel, Town Hall, thanking our TPS custodial maintenance crew for the work they did setting up for town meeting. They did a great job. I thought it was a very well-worn town meeting, uh, very efficient and organized, so thank you to the TPS staff involved there, led by, uh, Mr. Simon Teller. Second piece of correspondence is we did receive another request to actually put some dates to negotiations with Council 93. So, uh, with the chair's permission, I'll email the negotiation subcommittee at some point over the next few days and see if we can continue or restart negotiations with Council 93.
Sounds good.
And that's all we have for correspondence tonight.
Thank you. I have one more piece of correspondence from Ronnie Camille at Tinsboro TV. Um, he evoked the same thoughts, wants to thank us and specifically the custodians for setting up for town meeting. He wanted to specifically call out media production teacher, Tim Doust, and student volunteers, Megan McIsaac and Ryan Kaminsky for their help. Um, he said they did an amazing job, so thank you to those guys.
Great team effort by everyone. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to take 9B out of order.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0.
So, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Kavanaugh is here tonight. She's brought a couple of friends, so she's gonna come up and introduce, uh, some of our friends from TES to talk a little bit about the beginning of the school year and, uh, and her school's a little bit different for her this year maybe.
So, good evening, thank you again for having us tonight. Um, I'm honored to be standing with these two lovely ladies who were selected by their classroom teachers to represent TES. So, as you know, every year we come and provide a brief update on how the reopening has been going. Um, today is day 12, and it certainly has been a whirlwind, um, but we are doing amazing things at TES, and I'm proud to be able to introduce these ladies. This is Kier Jones and Karina Sandi, who will share an update, and we're available to answer any questions that you have after the presentation.
Good evening, my name is Kier Jones, I'm a fifth grade student in Mrs. Viera's class.
Hello, I'm Karina Sandi, and I'm a fifth grade student in Mrs. Rochlo, Mrs. Weed, and Mrs. Homestead's class. We are both honored to represent Tinsboro Elementary School here tonight. We hope our presentation gives you a peek into our amazing school. At September 14th, TES opened for the first time in 185 days. 742 students walked in through the doors or logged in remotely, and to be honest, we could not have been more excited. We missed our friends, teachers, and school a lot. Over 100 staff members worked hard two weeks before school started to be sure the building, classrooms, technology, and lessons were ready to go. Our school looks different. There are signs in the front of the building, in the hallway, and classrooms, but we know these are important messages to keep us safe. Last week, teachers and students took time to answer our questions about how the reopening of school has gone. In preschool, teachers created a story called "Mask On, Mask Off," which has pictures of the preschool staff with their masks on and their masks off, so the kids can recognize them when they see them in person and online. Teachers have come up with some new ways to share common interests and build a sense of community. Currently, the preschool teachers are meeting with the students remotely. Beginning October 13th, the preschool teachers will have students in at one of the ti- at one at a time, or in very small groups of two or three. In kindergarten, teachers enjoy seeing their colleagues, and it's awesome seeing children back in the building. Our kindergarten friends have been using hula hoops for a variety of reasons. It allows a visual to help the children socially distance. They also use them at recess for games and in the classroom for a place to play on the floor. The students love them. In first grade, the teachers shared that the students are doing a great job showing their stripes by wearing their masks, following the new rules, and persevering with their Chromebooks. Students are becoming more successful at logging on and joining the Google Meet and learning to navigate between the tabs. Second grade is success- successfully navigating the Google Suite while learning some new apps and add-ons like Perdeck and Padlet. The teachers report seeing the students learning our new school day while laughing and still having fun. Students have been showing their stripes to accomplish new tasks. In third and fourth grade, students are happy to be back in the building together with peers and teachers. Students have been following expectations, being kind to one another, staying safe by keeping distance, and being flexible with some of the techno- ne- technology challenges. In fifth grade, the first two weeks of school have been very busy. Teachers were busy learning about breakout rooms, Perdeck, jam boards, and Padlets. Teachers continued to learn how to teach students remotely and in school while making lessons fun and engaging. As a fifth grade student, I think our teachers are doing a great job. Are you wondering what a breakout room is? Breakout rooms are fun and exciting. We are able to meet in groups, small groups, of three to four students in our own Google Meet and discuss ideas, work together on projects, and accomplish group tasks. The special subject teachers report that students have been doing their best to show their stripes virtually and in the classroom. The specialists said, without a doubt, we are preparing this year's first through fifth graders' problem-solving skills that will only help them in the future. This trimester, specialists are teaching one cohort for six-week rotations, which has allowed for building relationships quicker. Students feel more comfortable asking questions after seeing the teacher's daily rather than only once per week. This year, we are doing recess differently. Instead of having recess on a playground, we are provided with two other alternatives. The first one is walking club. Walking club is exactly what it sounds like. We get to walk around the track. When we have walking club, we are usually in a line because the track is pretty narrow, so we have to wear our mask. The second alternative for recess is playing on the field. When we have recess on the field, we are all six feet apart, so we do not have to wear a mask. We are so proud to be a part of this Tinsboro community. We truly believe that we are in this together. Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, Mr. Messina, and Mrs. Fairbanks, and dedicated school committee members, thank you for showing your stripes and working hard to keep us safe. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us this evening.
Those are amazing girls.
Thank you.
Honestly, probably two of the most we've seen.
Unbelievable.
And I mean, you guys spoke very loudly, clearly.
Expressively.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy how just well students your age can do public speaking. Um, you do better than me. So, you mentioned a jam board? What's that?
Yes, so jam boards are when you're online and you can, so you have a screen where there's a bunch of sticky notes, but it's online, and you can type in your own answer in your sticky note.
Cool.
The teacher can review the page.
Awesome.
Karina, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You've talked about a lot of different, uh, applications that teachers are using. Which one's your favorite?
Hmm, probably Padlet. It's a lot like Jamboard, but it's different, like you can insert pictures on your sticky notes, and it's really cool.
Oh, awesome.
That's great.
Over and up for the wrestling committee.
I'm not sure what she said.
I know.
I don't know how to do it.
So, obviously, you girls did remote learning in the spring, and now you're doing it now. Can you talk about the differences and whether you liked it before and if you like it now?
Yeah, so, the, in the spring, they did it like, we had Google Meets, I think, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but only for a little bit, so we didn't have it the full school day. We did that, and then we had all of our work to do the rest of the days. And they gave out work, like, they gave out work for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and they gave it out all on Monday, so. And now, we do it, like, we can't do it in advance or anything, like, we do it while they're teaching, while we're on the meets. I agree with Karina. In the spring, we were all new to learning online, and now we are more experienced and we have new chances. Um, our teachers have introduced some new things like Jamboard and Padlet, so it's helping us.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Great. Could you talk a little bit about, on the, um, I don't know if you saw up there, the All About Me boards, mo- boxes, All About Me boxes?
So, basically, for the Me boxes, we would have a box, and, um, for our class, we didn't bring it in, we shared ours when we, um, like, you shared yours when you were remote, like, you wouldn't bring it into the classroom. But you had, um, like, like, two to five objects in your Me box, and so, basically, you're supposed to put in objects and even pictures to represent you and what you like and stuff like that.
That sounds great. Wonderful.
What's your favorite, in person or remote?
Um, I definitely prefer in person, but I think remote is excellent, too. I agree, I prefer in person.
Now, do you girls have to help your friends with any of the technology, or, I know you have some sisters, Kier.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to help them?
Um, my younger sister, Kaia, she's in second grade, she's doing pretty well, and we're both, we don't have many issues on our computers.
Do you have to help your brother?
What?
You have to help your brother, Karina?
No.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Well, thank you, girls, you did an amazing job. We loved having you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of the school year.
Thank you so much for coming, girls, great job.
Thank you.
Is it called a recess so families can clear or?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess and let everybody clear out, and then we'll rejoin.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Good night.
You guys were awesome, you did such a good job.
Thank you for bringing them out this evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were just like, on, spot, target.
Well, I knew they were gonna do it.
And we're going to treat it like this? How are we treating everything else?
You know, there's allergy season.
Kids have allergies beyond belief. So what are we going to do? So if there are parents calling all about my daughter having a cough, a simple cough, well, I know there's like three steps to it being shut down, but how can we be reassured that it's not going to be shut down? Like Lowell? Do you know, do you understand what I'm saying?
We're going to get into that in a little bit.
Okay. Well, this is, you know, this is just kind of one incidence where it's like personal just from today. So, I mean, there's many incidents where I could, could have a chronic illness and everyone's up in arms about it. Oh, coronavirus, sorry. I'm just kidding, Ryan, sorry, sorry, sorry. You're not allowed to do that. All right, but thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
On that.
Anybody else want to speak? Was there anybody else in the library, do we know?
I don't believe so.
That wanted to come in? No? Okay, so that's it, we'll move on. Thank you for speaking. We will move on to share the success. Natalie?
At THS, the students are adjusting well to the hybrid learning model. Congratulations to Aditya and Bodhi, Andrew Rice, and Kevin Carpenter for receiving a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. These committed students placed among the top 50,000 scholars of more than 1.5 million students on the PSAT exam. Class officer elections were recently held at the high school. Congratulations to all those who held class officer positions this year. The National Honor Society has elected Hallie Bangora, Abby Serrano, Abby Sevart, and Matt Tyers for this year's officers. Congratulations to them. And lastly, Aditya and Bodhi, Hallie Bangora, Kevin Carpenter, and myself have been selected as September Students of the Month. Congratulations to all. At TMS, they have started hitting their stride with their routines. Teachers are starting to push their students' thinking beyond the technology and are seeing great results. Although they would like to see all their students every day, they are seeing their students engage at high levels virtually. Teachers have applied a variety of teaching strategies in their classrooms. They continue to try to balance between technology and hands-on learning. Mr. Pollitt would like to give a big thank you to the Technology Department for all of their hard work and problem solving. They cannot thank them enough. They have been having lunches outside while the weather is good and hope for that time to continue. Dismissal has been busy with three times the number of parents pick up, but they have a system and it's moving along quite smoothly. They are starting to put together some after-school opportunities virtually at first, but they will ramp it up as they move through October. And tonight, Mrs. Kavanaugh, Kira, and Karina have covered all the updates at the elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Item six, subcommittee update. The policy subcommittee met tonight, and we would like to submit the following policies for our annual reaffirmation. They are policy 1.2, school committee meeting; 1.6, vision and theory of action; 1.7, district objectives; 2.5, fees for use of school facilities; 3.11, responsible use of technology staff; 4.11, responsible use of technology students; 5.22, bullying prevention and intervention plan; 5.27, student user fees; and 7.1, lunch prices. Can I get a motion to reaffirm those?
I'll make a motion to reaffirm those policies.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Personnel?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Chair, at this time, we'll jump into our school committee update. As soon as it comes up. So we'll go to the first slide. And as always, as we remind everyone in the community each week, that we are looking at context and data. You know, I think that our community is heightened to the sense of two weeks in the red. We're going to dive a little bit into those numbers, trying to really understand what those mean and the impact they have on Tinsborough Public Schools as we think about making decisions about learning models that are best for our students and our community. So we'll go to the next slide. So the next slide just shows a total test in Tinsborough since March 2020. You can see the DRS, or 4,200 tests. Again, this is background information for the committee. We're going to keep you informed, give you all the data we possibly can, and we're just going to keep this tracking so that you can see where the line graphs go. Next slide represents the total positive case count in Tinsborough. And again, this is as of the bi-weekly report that came out, oh, sorry, the weekly report that comes out that represents two weeks of data by MassDPH. So last Wednesday, 9:23, we had 132 positive cases last Wednesday. Again, this report comes out tomorrow around 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night. We'll go to the next slide. So two weeks ago, we hit 15 cases within the 14-day window. That was the first time we categorized in red. You can see from the trend in the line graph that we used to be in gray, and then we're green, back into green, and yellow a little bit. So we've kind of been all over the map. So what does that mean and what does that say about our community? It says ultimately that we're a small community, and a few cases here and there are going to impact us one way or the other significantly. So we were at 15 cases, which put us in the red. This past report on the 23rd, we were at 14 cases. Again, we stayed in the red. Hopefully, we're getting to the yellow tomorrow. We'll go to the next slide. As we think about those cases, though, last week, the report showed 14 cases. At the time of that Wednesday, only eight of the cases were actually active in the community, though. So that's another contextual factor that we need to think about and consider as we talk about our learning model. We'll go to the next slide.
Could I ask you a question real quick? On that slide, how long does each case stay on?
Each case stays on the count for two weeks. Every case stays on for two weeks. The activity of the case is dependent upon the individual and when they clear, and when they're asymptomatic for 24-plus hours.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll go to the next slide. This is the graph that we're all familiar with. This is the state graph. You can see Tinsborough in the north in red. Go to the next slide. So this is all we want to talk about. This is all we're going to provide a little context. So in Tinsborough, we said and identified that for the past two weeks, we're at 15 cases, and then last week, 14 cases. As you look at the average daily incident rate and what it means for a town like Tinsborough, every case statistically is far more significant than some of our neighboring districts. So if you look at the bottom for one second, Tinsborough, we could have zero to four cases, and we'd be categorized as green. That's gray, excuse me. You can see the graph above. We only have two options in this town to be in the green. We either have five cases or six cases. Those are the only two options to be categorized as green. We have seven options to be categorized as yellow, from seven to 13. And then, once we hit 14 cases within a two-week window, we're red. 14 or above, we're red. Now, let's provide some context. Chelmsford, a town of 35,000, could be in the green from five to 19 cases and needs 39 cases to hit the red zone. Again, all based on population. And the metric is based on active cases per 100,000 residents. So every case we get is multiplied by 8.33. You look at Lowell with 115,000 residents, they need 130 cases to get in the red. So we're talking 14, 15 cases. That's one person, two people before being in yellow. So one of the things that the commissioner advised us was, we need to look at three weeks of being in the red and then dive into those numbers and really understand what those numbers mean. You know, we're not going to say that once we hit red for three weeks, we're going to vote, because it doesn't necessarily apply. You know, we could have, and one of the, one of the things we heard about, what's the positivity rate? What's the positivity rate metric that's going to make us go to vote? To me, that's illogical, because that doesn't take the context in. We could be a 5% positivity rate in this community with zero cases in the school. Conversely, we could be 2.5% positivity at Tinsborough High School and need to shut that school down. So to say, what's the rate, what's the metric? It's not one single indicator. It's going to be a composition of everything. So we're studying the numbers, we're on top of the numbers, we're following them as they go. So we're at 14 cases last Wednesday. We will see where we land tomorrow. But we need to understand, given the bottom metric, Tinsborough, Chelmsford, Lowell, one or two cases is going to have a significant impact on our community. So let's jump to the next slide. So as we think about this slide, the top number is information directly from the Weekly Report. 14 cases, we have average daily incident rate of 8.3. We have eight active cases, total test, percent of positivity, 2.69. Again, that 2.69 speaks to the community. If that were 2.69 in the high school, that'd be an issue. But it's not. It represents the entire community. So let's go down to the bottom number. And this is the number that we're going to start to share with the school committee at every school committee meeting. And this number down here represents the total active cases in our district, in a school, by people who are attending school or working in the school. In other words, if there is a remote learner in our community who tests positive, it's not going to reflect here, because that shouldn't impact the decision the school committee makes about our learning model. Now, if it's a student on high grid, that is a different conversation, because that student obviously will be in the building at some point, or has been in the building at some point. But the other thing that this information does, and this graph at the bottom is going to do, is it will not delineate between a student or a staff member. So this committee and community is going to get information that says, Tinsborough High School has had this number of active cases since September 14th, the first day of school. So people have actually set foot in the school. Tinsborough Middle School will have this many, Tinsborough Elementary School will have this many. So as you can see, to date, knock on wood, we have not had one active case, student and our staff, in any of these three schools. So the previous slide talks about red. If we're red for three weeks, you know, we need to make, we need to look at the data. We are looking at the data. If we are red tomorrow, right now, it would have no bearing on my recommendation to this committee for learning model. We have zero active cases in the school. Now, if this were different, and we were yellow tomorrow, and we saw seven cases at Tinsborough High School, I'd be making a different recommendation. So I just want this committee to know that we are going to track this data closely, and we're going to follow, and we're going to make the best recommendation we possibly can for the safety and well-being of all the kids and staff in the district. So I think this is great information to have. I know that Ryan has done a ton of work with Sarah Lewenzic, Michelle Riley, and James Robson. They meet weekly, they talk about this information, they meet every Thursday after this information comes on Wednesday night, and we pull all the graphs together, all the data together, and they have that conversation. So that's a weekly conversation that happens, based on the best information we have. Michelle Riley has been an invaluable asset to our, our community this year, is doing a great job. So, so I just wanted to provide that information for, for this committee and for people at home to know that, yeah, we are watching the color code, but that's just one piece of information. You know, to me, the bottom graph here is the most important one. We've not had one active case student or staff in our schools since September 14th. And that's another contextual factor that we just need to consider. So when we talk about, and we've been talking about it since July, context and data, context and data, they are married, and we have to look at everything as we think about learning models and moving forward.
So before we move on, does anybody have any questions on these charts or the numbers? Are they clear? Are they telling the story? Everybody's good. All right. I totally get it.
I think it's very important that our parents, our staff, our kids know that just because we're in the red for three weeks does not mean we're going full remote. And our numbers are very small. So that's a big part of this.
So I guess the second part to talk about would be process. So next slide. So communication. If we have a positive case anywhere in this district, regardless of school, the entire school community will get a letter from me. A letter is a standard letter, it's a form letter, that's going to say that we've had an active case in this district, okay? And we're going to put that out as soon as we can confirm positivity. We will then send a follow-up letter that has said we have done our close contact. So let me rephrase that, not we. At the Board of Health or the CTC, Contact Tracing Collaborative has done due diligence and contact traced effectively and closed out their investigation. Then we will send another letter saying, if you have not been notified, you are not in close contact, okay? A lot of districts are doing it, they all have their own system of how they're, they're looking at contact tracing in the classroom. As far as we're concerned, the Tinsborough Public Schools affected tonight, if a student in a fourth-grade classroom tests positive, that does not mean the entire fourth-grade class is shut down. Our desks are six feet apart, our kids are wearing masks, they're washing their hands. We've put mitigation strategies in place. We will have due diligence, we'll talk to teachers, we'll find out what's going, whether they sent us lunch, and we'll do all of that legwork to give the Board of Health as much information as they need, so they can make the determination as to whether someone is considered a close contact or not. That is not the decision of the school. If there is a, if there is a student in a household of someone who's tested positive, we as a school district will take the position that we're considering you a close contact until you can prove otherwise from the Board of Health. So we're going to err on the side of caution in the house of a positive case. But it's not our job per se to do, to do the whole contact tracing. That's going to be done by the Board of Health, but we will assist them every step of the way. So I just wanted to make sure that in terms of communication and how it's going to go out, everyone's clear. So I know that I've heard, I've heard from my own daughter, you know, Dad, I heard so-and-so has coronavirus, and he was sitting next to me at lunch. If a parent hasn't received a letter from me, there's not been an active case in Tinsborough Public Schools. But there are a lot of myths potentially out there, rumors potentially out there. If you've not received it from me, you have not had a positive case in Tinsborough Public Schools. So that is where we are in terms of what we're looking at, how we're thinking about it, how we're going to approach it. We're trying to be as communicative, as transparent as possible, but we, we're honest, and this is, this is at the forefront of everything we do every single day. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee at this point about COVID or what we're planning.
I have a question. If there is a positive case affecting one of the schools, does your letter go to the parents of only that school or to the entire district?
Entire district.
Okay.
And then the close contact letter, does that come from Board of Health?
No, that'll come from me after the Board of Health tells me that they've cleared everyone.
Okay, but how about if you are a close contact, or your child's a close contact?
So that's going to be a direct phone call from the Board of Health.
Direct phone call, okay.
Yep. Yes, there'll absolutely be a phone call. They want to talk to you ASAP, yep.
And what are the protocols as far as, so if you're close contact, what are the protocols to the heart?
So the close contact is within, within six feet of someone for 10 minutes or longer. There's debate, whether it's consecutively or cumulatively. So, you know, it's a conversation that we're going to need to have on a case-by-case basis. It's hard to say right now. So it really depends on the situation in each classroom. But again, our classrooms are all set up. Every kid is six feet apart.
And at this point, where are the conduit of information when it comes to helping the appropriate people do the contact tracing? So we'll share whatever information we can out if it's appropriate.
And then, so if you say decide, you know, somebody has been, hadn't been in close contact with someone, typically, do they have to get COVID tested then?
So regardless of the COVID test, they have to quarantine for 14 days, because it takes, it could be, they could get a negative COVID test, and it could take 12 days for the, for the virus to manifest. So it's a, it's a 14-day quarantine, no matter what, if deemed a close contact by the local Board of Health.
And then, at that point, would they go on remote learning? I'm just, for informational purposes.
Yes, no, absolutely. That's a good question. Yes, they would. Similarly, if we have a staff member who's considered a close contact, they will be working from home, instructing your kids from home, and we'll have a parent professional or another adult in the room facilitating and managing the kids in person. So it's not like we're going to shut down teaching and learning for 14 days. So that's the other side of that.
And if we have a student or staff member tests positive, at what point are they deemed eligible to come back?
So I believe that's the PCP, but I believe it's 24 hours symptom-free. But don't comment on that. That's, that's up to the PCP. And parents will not be notified about close contacts, you know, that's, that's a precautionary measure. You only receive notification about positive cases. Any other questions about that? So just in terms of more communication, you know, I think, I think one of the things we want to do is be as, you know, communicative as possible to the community. So, so we have started this Inside TPSTV show. You may have seen the commercial with Mr. Dust and myself last week. I will have a regular segment on that to talk about COVID and where we are as a community, where the numbers are, just to be, to be out there on social media and kind of let it people know that we are following and paying attention. One of the things that we updated last week was athletics. So let me explain how that impacts athletics here at the high school. If a town is designated as red, does not mean their season's canceled. It only means they cannot participate that week against another community. They can still practice, they can still be with each other, they can still do whatever they, skill work, whatever they need to do, but they cannot travel to a game or host a game if we're deemed red. Now, if a member of a team tests positive, that team is shut down, and that's the mid-watch rule. So if a member of a team tests positive, the team is shut down. And it just, it makes sense, given the nature of these sports and these kids being around each other. You know, some of the sports require, don't require them necessarily to have masks on 24/7. I know that in soccer, you can have a mask down if you're 10 feet away, but, you know, it's just, there are different rules and different parameters. But if you're part of a team and on a bus and all those things, it's just, it's too hard to, to say, yeah, we're going to risk it. So if a member of a team gets it, the team will be shut down for 14 days.
Is it 14 days of the season?
I believe it's 14 days. I'll get clarification on that, but I believe it's 14 days. All right, so the last thing, go ahead, John, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, if you're gonna, I just want to say something before you.
The last thing I was going to say is the show Inside TPSS, you know, I think one of the things we want to do is be able to provide parents a look inside the schools. I know it's hard, they've seen pictures, but, you know, we're not going to have the traditional open house. So part of this goal is, this show is really a community outreach and give you, give you a look at what the kids are doing and how they're responding, what clubs and activities we can potentially offer our kids. So, so the goal of Inside TPSS is to bring, to open up the school as much as we can, to provide as much information as we can to the community. So if anyone has any ideas or thoughts or would like to see something, please email myself and, or Tim Dust, and we will, we'll absolutely add that to the menu of options. So that's what I have for communication, and that's what I have for COVID before we turn to technology and Mr. Piper, so I'll help you.
If I could, we talked about this at most of our school committee meetings, and it was one of the questions that was asked this evening. We are in this hybrid model for the first time, Esther, and we said we would commit to that for parents, teachers, planning, so on. CDC recommendations and DESI is driving our decisions on what we can and cannot do because of busing. So I just want to remind everyone of that. We are looking at the CDC recommendations, the DESI recommendations. If we could bus 850 kids to our elementary school, we would be five days today, I believe, or I personally would have voted for. So waiting on regular updates and just a reminder to everybody, as a committee, we will revisit this two, three weeks before, see where we are. We may have to stay hybrid. I'm hoping, as a parent of not only a student, but a teacher, a taxpayer in Tinsborough, and a member of this committee, that we go back five days a week. That would be my goal. And I think I speak for all of us when I say that. So as soon as some of these regulations are lifted, we look forward to bringing everybody back. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. I'm good. So we'll go to the next slide, and we'll invite Mr. Piper to come forward and just talk a little bit about technology and where we are.
Thank you for having me. This is the longest I've sat in two months.
It's been great.
So I thought I'd start with our vision, which, as you know, is to provide an innovative, inclusive, and individualized experience that maximizes all our learners. Not only that, but in a pandemic, in a hybrid model. So technology obviously plays a big part of that. So I thought I'd kind of take us back a little bit. I think we met a couple months ago and as we were deciding on the hybrid model, and take you to where we are today, and, and the kids kind of said it all, which was great. As a technology team and as the head of technology, every little blip, every little glitch, we kind of take personally, and we take a lot of pride in trying to give the best product, you know, to, to succeed in this model. So obviously, there's going to be blips, but listening to the kids today, they don't really see those, you know? They're having a great experience, which is so nice to hear. So strategy. So again, we, we're doing the concurrent model in the classroom. So we're asynchronously teaching at-home students and students in the classroom, which, again, is one of the most challenging, if not the challenging, challengingest? The most challenging model out there. We're not, we're not doing the model where kids are home asynchronously for a week and then coming to school, and the teachers are flip-flopping back and forth. So it's been a challenge for everyone. And I want to tell you what we've done to prepare for that, because I feel like we've done a lot, but you can only prepare so much. I was trying to come up with a great analogy for this, and all I could come up with was Noah's Ark, right? He's building a big boat for a flood that no one had ever seen before. So that's what we're trying to do here. We're building a, a learning environment for a model that we've never done before. So we looked at all sorts of things. We had task committees, as you know, subcommittees. We had a lot of smart and intelligent people in rooms, and a lot of back and forth at all levels, from parents to teachers to administration. We looked at student devices, okay? We have this model, do we have enough student devices? Answer was no. So how do we get devices? We went out, luckily for us, many school districts were scrambling to get Chromebooks. Somehow, we struck it lucky and found a vendor that was able to provide us a huge number of Chromebooks to allow us to go one-to-one, as you know, from elementary school all the way up through grade eight. We're still doing the BYOD model at the high school and supplying devices there as needed for those students. We looked at teacher technologies. How are the teachers going to work in this, this new world, this new environment, the concurrent classroom? What do they need? And I don't know if we talked about it last time, but I know you probably saw in Dr. Flanagan's video or, or other online media, the carts that the teachers were provided. So at the time, we thought, hey, this is, this is what we think will work. These are the carts, a monitor, a camera, speakers, electrical outlets, all that, so the teacher can be there in front of her kids that are in the classroom, as well as have her students on Google Meet at home for that concurrent classroom model. Consistency, what programs are we going to be using? We don't want, you know, kids in period one having to log into Zoom, and then they go to period two and up. That's a Google Meet, and then period three is a go-to meeting. So I think we did a great job as a district and with teachers, again, consolidating. So we're using Google as our base, as we always have, and using Google Meet and Google Technologies. And so that's very consistent for the students. They know now, they, they start their day, they go into Google Classroom, the static link to their Meet is there if they're remote, and sometimes in the class, which we'll talk about in a bit. And it's all right there, and the teachers have really got, got on, got on the Google Classroom train. Many of them were, but now, now it's very consistent. So very proud of that and the work they've done there. And then the network, right? We've never planned for this many devices, this, this much streaming on our network. And it was really hard to test that when we had an empty building all summer. And then we had the two weeks, you know, when teachers came back, in which we were able to test it a little, but it was nothing compared to 1,000 devices on the network every day, students at home streaming back and forth. So that was a little up in the air, you know, is it going to work? Is it going to melt? It didn't. Foreshadowing. Student and family support. Again, you know, we historically haven't really supported too much students at home technology-wise, but now they have our devices, you know, it's up to us to support them, make sure they're in class, they can get online, they can get to the programs they need. So we looked at that as well. And professional development, how do we keep going? Okay, we can, we can come up with a plan and say, hey, we think this is going to work, but we know that's not always 100%. So how are we going to pivot? How are we going to shift? How are we going to adapt when something does go bump in the night? So process-wise, I mentioned the devices we got for students, the, the technology we got for teachers, the consistency of the network. We, we increased bandwidth, as I think I mentioned last time, at the elementary school. Uh, we put some additional access points in rooms that were missing access points. Again, we weren't sure, um, without the students in the building, if that was going to be sufficient. Um, we've created different policies on our network, different firewalls. You can allocate, you know, so much traffic for video and for the staff and for, for students. Again, doing that in an empty room, um, a little tricky. So it all came to the execution on day one. So that was like 12 days ago. 12 days ago is opening day, which seems like 112 at this point. But I'm happy to report, as the students did, um, the network did not melt. Uh, we did have some hiccups and our network admin, uh, quickly jumped all over it. Took a little while, um, to figure out what exactly we needed to tweak. There's so many settings. Uh, as of, and again, it took a little while. As of late Friday, um, it was touch and go in, in many rooms and for many of our teachers in terms of network. So what we did was we hardwired everyone, got off the network at the elementary school, plugged everyone directly in, which helped over there. But again, as of Friday, we made a change in the network. Um, there was a little conflict between some policies we made and, and wireless speed right now is flying. So we've heard good reports the last couple of days, Monday and today, um, mainly from the high school. A few teachers here who are having problems, said they didn't have any problems the last two days. So we continue to look at that, continue to monitor. That's one of our, our most crucial aspects right now. Teachers, again, have quickly adapted. They've been using their carts, um, effectively, efficiently, as, as a student said, you know, there's that back and forth. I was really, really happy to hear about all the different online programs they're using to collaborate and not just sitting there listening all day long. On the flip side of that, as we get into, uh, the, the evolution part of this, I, I feel like we're in a good place right now to really look at what's been working and what hasn't been working. And it's been 12 days, which is, you know, it's a short time in the grand scheme of things, but it's enough time right now to start saying, okay, we need to make some little changes here and there. So one of the things we're doing now is, we've really noticed that the teachers, um, we've kinda shied away from the projectors because they have that cart. And our vision originally was, hey, we're gonna have kids, uh, at home in the Google Meet. And so we can collaborate with each other, we're also gonna have the students in class on the Google Meet. So if the teacher needs to show something, she's not doing it on the projector, she's sharing it in the Google Meet with everyone in her class. The issue with that is now we're having students in the class, really in a Google Meet, just like the kids at home, for extended periods of time during the day, which, which now we're finding out isn't really necessary. So how do we get the projectors back into place? We have a couple of options there. We've looked at, um, splitters to now have the computer, the monitor, the, the projector, so students in the room don't have to go into Google Meet. They can see what the teacher's doing up on the screen again. Just today, um, we started playing with Google Chromecast at the elementary school. We, we have a couple of teachers last year that used them, so Google Chromecast is a wireless projection, uh, that's hooked into the projector. So from their laptop, they don't need any cables, they just cast to the projector. Uh, we installed five more that we had, um, on the shelf. We installed those today and at the kindergarten level, and we're gonna be rolling that up to grades. Might be right on, right up through high school. Because we've noticed that the projector really is important. We thought this model was gonna work, uh, with the Google Meet, but again, we feel that's not the best use of, of, uh, students' time. So as the tech guy, I guess what I'm trying to say is we're trying to move a little bit away from all that technology in the classroom to make sure that we are having this, um, innovative and inclusive environment like they would if they were in the classroom. So I think we're doing a great job there. Uh, I, I can't leave here without giving a shout-out to my team and then our new hire, Jocelyn Mitchell, who's mainly at the elementary school right now. She's the Technology Integration Specialist, um, doing a great job over there with the teachers, helping them out, doing a great job with the remote learning. So she's mainly in charge of the, um, remote help, uh, for parents. And she's, she's been very responsive there. And I think we've had good, good, um, feedback from parents on our response time with helping them. Over here, again, we have Tom Varnum, who's the, um, Digital Learning Specialist over here, also working with the teachers, again, experimenting with things, figuring out what's working, what's not working, evolving and tweaking and, and adapting and moving on from there. And again, the rest of my team, the network guy, Angel, Jamie, and Steve Coughlin, all, all, everyone's just pitching in, doing a great job. So I, I have to give those guys credit. Yeah, and I have to give the teachers credit. I can't, I can't even leave here without giving them credit, because they have been super patient. Again, they had the two weeks of training, they, they did a great job there. But you never know until you get in there on day one, uh, how the game's gonna go. And they've done a great job adapting and they're the ones who've actually come up with a lot of the ideas of, well, why can't I do it this way? Why, why do I need this on the cart and not that? And, and we're like, yeah, why not? So I, I guess that's kind of our motto right now, is why not? We're sure, we're trying to figure out what's gonna work best. And it might not be the same for one teacher as it is for another. So we're just, we're just moving on from there. I think we're going up, we're doing a great job.
Mr. Chair, I can add just a, a couple of points to Mr. Piper's presentation. One, I think, A, you're undecided yourself, Derek, the, the lead you've taken on this initiative has been incredible. The work you've done has been incredible. Um, and I think one of the things that, that this whole conversation or presentation really reflects is, is what we talked about in July. You know, because we are a small district, we can be minimal, we can be adaptable. Not flexible, adaptable. So we are adapting to every situation that comes along. And it's not necessarily, Derek says, it's my way or the highway. You know, we're, we're empowering teachers to make decisions, smart decisions for their classrooms. Um, if we need to go with Chromecast in some classrooms, we'll do that. It's still gonna be appropriate at times for all kids to be in a Google Meet, home and alike, so they can collaborate with each other. Um, so, so we're just giving them and continuing to give them the necessary tools that they need to be as creative and differentiated in their instruction as possible. Um, so, uh, so appreciate and, and really hats off to Derek and our tech team. They've done an incredible job the past couple of weeks.
Thanks, Derek. That was gonna be the first thing I mentioned is, I really appreciate how quickly you guys adapt and you're not just stuck in, well, this is what we wanted to do, this is what we're gonna do. You're getting feedback and you're responding quickly. I'm sure a lot of that has to do with you too, Mark, and what your team does. Are there any needs equipment-wise? Is there any requests for our software packages that we don't have coming from teachers? Is there stuff that you and your team could use that you don't have?
Yeah, so we are, um, looking right now, one of our main needs is we're looking into starting to replace teacher devices. The teacher devices are, are really old MacBooks. So we do have, uh, actually, they were supposed to be delivered today, but they weren't. Pretty soon, uh, we have about 50 of those coming in. 50 Macs coming in that we're gonna start to swap out. We're also, uh, we tried this the other day, we're gonna get some memory for some of the older Macs, double the amount of memory in those. The one that we tried it with made a night and day difference, uh, for some of the older Macs. So again, we're always looking for these little, little tweaks, little solutions that, you know, if we can't replace everything at once, at least we can now put memory in some of the older ones and, and get those to, you know, just another step up before they can be swapped out. So but other than that, um, though, we're, we're in pretty good shape. We've gotten a lot of stuff.
Excellent. Questions from the committee?
I just wanna thank you and your team. You know, I see it firsthand, three days a week, um, with multiple different grade levels on the work that you put into it. You know, making it user-friendly for the younger ones with their little QR code, um, all the way up to, I live up to sixth grade at my house, so, um, you know, the, the different tools that the, the middle school's using. So, um, thank you so much. I, I know there's even so much more that we're not aware of that's gone on behind it, so, um, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Have a great night.
So just for the next slide, uh, just a, just a quick update, uh, in terms of where we are. As you know, our next school meeting is October 6th. We meet on the 20th, meeting on 17th. December 1st, Mrs. Lewenzik will be back. And that's generally where we do the mid-year snapshot on what special education looks like, where our costs are projecting out for the year. And like every year, it's, it's like throwing darts at a wall, at a board, right? We do the best we can with what we know at that time. But again, it's such a fluid situation that, um, um, it's gonna change. But, but Saturday will be back on the 7th, first, we'll provide a side update. That is all we have for the school committee update part of the agenda.
Mr. Chair? Sorry, um, here at New Business. School Committee Operational Walkthrough. So last Friday. So last Friday? No, two Fridays ago.
Two Fridays ago.
Two Fridays ago. Mr. Bo, Ms. Dan, myself, visited the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school as part of the MOA with the teachers to see what a day in a school looks like. So we walked through all the schools. Each one of us will speak about our experience in one school. So Jeff will talk about the elementary school.
Sure, thanks. Um, so, yeah, at first, walking into the elementary school, the first thing that you couldn't help but notice was just how clean the building was. I mean, the building's always been clean, but it was just beyond immaculate. So, you know, it, it was really good to see that. You just know that every surface in there has probably been wiped down 100 times over the course of the day, just the way, you know, everything locked, everything felt, what have you, if you touched anything. And we walked through, went, took a look through the nurse's office and saw how you had the regular nurse's office area that was set up for, you know, regular sick visits. And then we also saw where you have your, um, what's it called, the clean room? You know, for any of the, any of the. Isolation rooms, thank you. Drawn a blank on the term. And it was, it was interesting to see how it was set up in a way that you really can keep, that needs to be isolated away from the kids who have this, you know, headache or something that's not as, could be as major an issue. And keeping that separation available, not just from the walking into the nurse's office, but when they're being, if they need to be removed, you know, when the parents come to pick them up, there's, there's still that, that space there. You know, and looking through, walking through the hallways, looking, I poked into a few classrooms and was, was able to see, what actually is somewhat almost surprising to me was how attentive the students were at every grade level. Whether they were focused on their teacher, whether they were looking at their, their Chromebook. It, it was better than a room full of adults. They were focused, they were paying attention, they were engaged. You know, can't say enough about how hard you could, you knew the teachers were working to keep them that engaged. Just knowing how hard it is, uh, to keep my own kids engaged and just when you're talking to them, you can see them blaze over, they look over here, they look over here. That wasn't happening. Every classroom, they were focused. It was incredible. And one of the things that actually, I think Ryan, we were kinda joking about this when, um, one of the things I know, to kinda keep a normal feeling in, in the, just with the kids walking through the hallway, you know, you do have the directional arrows and the tigers on the ground, uh, to make sure they're doing what they need to do, but to not have it feel so clinical and make it somewhat fun for the kids. Uh, we saw a group of, I think there were lower elementary school students that were doing this zombie walk. And they had their hands out, so they couldn't touch anything. And, you know, they were being a little bit silly, but it was, it helped them have a little bit of fun while they're doing this clinical walk from their bathroom run to back to their classroom. They didn't seem at all concerned, they seemed happy, um, which I think is a big concern for any of the parents, you know. I know before we went back to school, one of the biggest things that I would hear is, well, how, how are they going to feel emotionally in the classroom that's gonna be sterile and clinical? And it, you didn't see that. You saw that they were happy to be back with their friends. You saw that they were, again, like I was saying, engaged with, with what they were learning. So it was, it was a very, very positive experience. You know, definitely, big thank you to the teachers, to the staff, to the custodial staff. It's a big joint effort and it couldn't be done without everyone having a, having, being all in.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you.
So I'm gonna speak about the middle school. And I think, um, for anybody who grew up in Tingsborough, you went to that school in some way, shape, or form, be it high school, elementary school, or middle school, it's been all of it. And so it's a totally different school than it used to be. To echo what Jeff was saying, it's incredibly clean. And it's just amazing how the building's been transformed. You know, as you walk in, we got a glimpse at, uh, Mr. Piper's office there with, um, all the, the tech folks. It's like tech support headquarters, um, over there at the middle school. And I think, uh, they're, they're opening up a customer service window coming soon, is the rumor out here. There were hand-sanitizing stations all over the place. And the big thing that really struck me was walking from the high school down the sidewalk to the middle school, and every single window on that school was open. I don't know in my lifetime that I've ever seen every single window on that school open. The airflow in the building was amazing. It was a, it was a nice day when we were there. The airflow was great, the students seemed awake and engaged, um, which is tough for middle schoolers. There were lots of air purifiers there and, you know, Dr. Flanagan pointed out, some of the loaners that we got from some of the local communities, which was, uh, really great partnership with some local communities, which I believe we've given those back and gone our own at this point. It was, the building was definitely in the best shape I've ever seen. We had no intentions of going into the classrooms. It was really a hallway walk and kinda just poke our, you know, peek our head at the door. But, uh, Mrs. Downing invited us to kinda scoot in. Um, and we got to see these, this projector demonstration that Mr. Piper was speaking about, where she was, um, she was super excited, cause she, she hooked it up herself, which, you know, kudos to her. She was able to project for the students on, um, the projector in her classroom, so they didn't have to have their computers open at that time. And the students at home could be in their Google Meet, um, and everybody was seeing the same thing. The students were, there was lots of productive hooping and hollering, I guess. But lots of energy in the school and the, they just seemed happy to be back. The teachers seemed happy to be back. The nurses station, I'm not gonna say the same things as Jeff, but it was the same situation with typical nurses station and then the isolation rooms. The cafeteria was set up amazing, um, the use of the auditorium for lunch as well. And then, um, I don't know who procured these awesome tents, but, um, the tents are pretty amazing. So there's this tent at each school and they're huge, um, which allows the students the outside time that they need to get the mass breaks, to have lunch outside. I know as a middle school, I never got to have lunch outside. So these middle schoolers are lucky, they get to have some of that flexibility. It was, it was a fantastic, um, walkthrough, so, thanks.
Mr. Messina, we call him P.T. Bonner, he got the tents.
So those tents, I believe, are 30 by 60?
30 by 60.
And they're probably the safest place to be in case of a fire. Each corner of the tent has a dedicated fire extinguisher. So they're the safest place to be. So very similar experience at the high school. They had the tents outside where the students could go to eat and be with their friends and socialize. Uh, we walked around, there's a lot of signage, uh, one-way hallways and reminders to social distance and wash your hands. Uh, we walked by a science lab, um, Duck House, right, science lab and, is it biology, I believe? And so I visit the schools every year since I joined the school committee. You couldn't tell the difference between that and a normal year. It's just the kids were up, they were moving. It just looked like a normal science lab, so that was great to see. We discussed, you know, mass breaks, what those look like. This, the gym and the library out here are being used for some of the larger classes. So all the kids get me in the class, we can space them out. Similarly, the isolation rooms for the nurses, the ability to have lunch inside and out. It, it just felt normal being in the school again. I mean, granted, there was fewer students, but it was just a good feeling. There's a lot of smiles, there's a lot of happy faces. You know, we attended as part of the MOA, but I think it's a good experience for all school committee members if you have the opportunity to come visit, you know, email Mike and set up an appointment. Teachers love to see us, the administration loves to see us, they like hearing from us. So it was just a really good experience. Any questions from anybody? Okay. With that, we'll move to finance. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are 10 bill warrants presented to the school committee tonight. I have them back, all approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for signing of payroll. Since we last approved payroll, there were two payrolls, the September 14th payroll and 28th payroll. Again, the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. And just for other finance, um, as you know, we did have our town meeting, finally, uh, Saturday morning. The voters approved the school committee budget of $21,178,601. And just wanted to thank the citizens of Tingsborough for approving our budget.
Thank you, Joe. School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Flanagan, the school committee, the principals, teachers, janitorial department, the technology department, and everybody else for all the hard work they continuously put in in order for us to have as normal of a school year as we can.
Nothing at this time. Good, thank you.
I'm good. Just wanna speak to two quick things. I think we talked a lot about adaptability tonight and, um, I had the pleasure of going through all of the classrooms with Principal Kavanaugh at TES this morning. I think we visited almost every single classroom that we could. And so, yeah, while Mr. Piper said it's only been a couple of weeks with us getting students and teachers up on the quick learning curve, we're starting to really focus on instructional practices now. And so that's been our, that was the real focus of our walkthrough today, was taking a look at how the technology is being used and what solutions we can come up with so that we can get closer and closer to best practices. We might never hit the exact same best practices. We might never hit the exact same best practices, but we can come close and we can adapt in a way that makes it feel as much like school as possible. And that's really our goal, particularly on the in-person days for those students. So kudos to the teachers. I really appreciated the opportunity to get through there today. And I, as we shift to getting over the hump of the technological hiccups and implementation part of it, Derek's team's going to be right there alongside of us, addressing instructional practices and making sure that great teachers can do the work that they do for and with kids. There's just a second thing I want to say over and over again is our nursing staff is second to none. You know, we joke all the time that this isn't exactly what any of us thought we'd signed up for and could be prepared for, but the school nurses, the amount of work and the level of competency that they're demonstrating in guiding us through every single day is amazing. So thank you to that team for all the work that they do.
Mr. Ray Banks?
Well said, thank you.
I would first like to thank you guys for coming out today and sharing your experience with us so far this year and your concerns. As a board, we do hear you and we share in some of the frustrations as parents ourselves of children in the school system. So thank you guys for coming out and sharing your experiences with us. Again, thank you to Mr. Piper. Everything's been, I haven't heard a single complaint from a parent in regards to technology. So great job by you and your staff, for sure. And again, to Dr. Flanagan and his administration, thank you for everything you guys do every day.
I want to echo all those thanks to everyone, but I also want to add thanks to all the parents because I know how difficult for many of you, how hard it is and how many changes and how many supports you had to put into place to make all this happen. And I just really thank all the parents because we know it's a whole team effort. It's not just the school, it's the parents too, to make this work. And so I do, we do see that and we do thank you all for all your hard work. But I also want to say, on a positive note, Kiri Kavanaugh's team that she brought today, I was blown away, they were amazing. So I just want to say thank you to both their parents and the students too, who really were amazing. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations Natalie for student of the month. Great job. And then Kira and Karina, I know they're not here right now, they've left, but they did a fantastic job. I think they can give all of us a lesson in public speaking when we're ready for our development time. And, you know, to our guests today, thanks for coming and sharing your side. You know, I would encourage the community, if you have strong feelings, reach out to the state, reach out to DESI, they need to hear your voice as well. We have to follow DESI guidelines, but, you know, reach out to DESI, you know, your voice makes a difference. So thank you for coming and sharing with us.
Just, just the nurses are absolutely phenomenal, rock stars across the board. But our students, Karina, Karen, phenomenal, congratulations to you. But Derek, you talked about it, you talked about your presentation, you said, you know, our teachers have become adaptable, our teachers are overcoming things. And part of the reason they're able to do that is because our kids are great. Our kids are responsive, our kids are respectful, our kids want to be there. So our kids make it easier for our teachers to adapt and want to work hard and give them everything we possibly can. Our students, top to bottom, phenomenal across the board the past two weeks. Couldn't be more proud of a group of kids, maybe like Korea, they're just, they've overcome so much and they're dealing with so much and they come in like troopers every day, wearing their masks and they go out and they take their mask breaks and they stay six feet apart. It's all about these kids. These kids will make us want to come to work every day and they're doing a fantastic job. So proud of every one of them.
So actually, that brings up a great point that I forgot to mention, we're talking about the high school. One of the most shocking things was hardly anybody uses locks on their lockers. There's just no issue with people breaking into lockers. Mr. Ogden said he's never seen a culture like that, wishes he knew what it was because he'd write a book and make a million dollars and retire. But it just shows, you know, just the good culture we have in town. We just have good kids, they don't tolerate any nonsense. And so I'm not shocked that they're, you know, working so well with the teachers. Congratulations Natalie, great job. Karina and Kira, I swear to God, these presentations get better every year. They're amazing, I look forward to the rest of the schools. Sarah, Tanya, T and I saw you come in late, thank you. We appreciate the feedback, you know, we do hear you. And then, Mr. Piper, great job. As when things settle down, you know, maybe Mike will give you a few days off, I'll lobby for you.
No chance.
And just thank you to the teachers, the staff, the students. Very uncertain coming into the year what it would look like, especially after the spring, and I think it's been amazing compared to what it was. So just great job by everybody. And with that, there is no need for executive session at this time, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second set motion?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0, we are adjourned. Have a good night.